Good evening, I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Monday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We have people participating remotely as well dialing in, and I feel will all join me on the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'm gonna start off with public comments and announcements, and Chief, do you wanna?
Good evening, members of the board. Dave Gilmatt, Chief of Police. Another happy event tonight, as you've seen in your packets perhaps, there's a memo from me, and also a conditional offer of employment for Mr. James Hinesley. James is actually a local guy, grew up in Chatham, and then went off to college, UNH, came out with a business administration degree, and then became employed at the Essex County Sheriff's Office up north for a while until we discovered him, and he decided to come back to his roots here on the Cape. So, he's ready to go, he's standing up, ready to go, and go into the next police academy, which is going to be held at the Joint Base Cape Cod, which is very lucky because it's a fairly easy commute, and that's gonna be about, that's starting a week from tonight, a week from today, and that's gonna be about a twenty-one, twenty-two week program. So, this is where the work begins, but I just want you to introduce you to James, and certainly hope you would, you voted positively on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for attending, James, as well. Does anybody, any of the board members have anything to say?
It'll be a short debate.
Yeah, I don't know how we could turn him down since he got dressed up and all.
Congratulations and welcome home.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, it's great to have you here, and it's great to have a local, so, and UNH grad, my daughter went to UNH, so.
Graduated Monomoy High School, too.
Yeah, that's right, excellent, so it's great to have you, so it's great to have a local, thank you.
Thanks.
Mary, do you want to, oh, we're gonna do Scott, sorry, first, presentation by Scott Carpenter from Monomoy Regional School District, oh, Joe, you had announcements, I apologize.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, and I think we would note for the record that it appears that Selectman McCaskill has joined the meeting remotely off camera, but you do have all five members. I had two quick announcements, the first one comes from our Youth Services Director Sheila House, and it's about a very important announcement, an event that's taking place this Thursday, February seventeenth, it's an expert panel and community open forum on the topic of playing a role in suicide awareness. Again, this event is taking place Thursday, February seventeenth, from five-thirty to six-thirty at Brooks Free Library, right here on Main Street. Again, it's an expert panel and community open forum, talking about playing a role in suicide awareness. There is a number, if there are questions, the number is seven-seven-four-three-three-zero-four-five-five-zero. We've shared this with the board, and it will also be on our website, so that's happening on Thursday. And then, very quickly, on behalf of our Voter Information Committee, I heard from the Chair, Emily Mylan, and just asking committee, Chairs of Committees, if they'll be willing to participate in the Know Your Town podcast, and so Emily and her committee have made that invitation, so just trying to get the word out to Committee Chairs that if you'd be interested in talking about what your committee does for the benefit of our town, to certainly follow up with Emily Mylan over at Brooks Free Library and the Voter Information Committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. And now we'll go to the presentation by Monomoy Regional School District Scott Carpenter for the two thousand twenty-three preliminary budget. Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
Do you, okay, are you gonna?
Yes, so I'm Scott Carpenter, the Superintendent at Monomoy Regional, we have our Business Manager, Michael McMillan here, and Meredith Henderson, our Chair, is in the audience, so I will turn things over to Michael, and he's been doing a great job of doing the budget presentation for our committee in the town of Chatham, and now here, and we'll answer any questions you have after.
Great, thank you, good evening, Michael.
Good evening, Selectmen, so I'm gonna, I've got some slides up here, I'm gonna go through, just to give you an overview of how we arrived at the budget request that we put together, and then the last few slides will talk about the assessment process and how the numbers are playing out there. That's the plan, hopefully.
And I can run it for you if you'd like.
Oh, is that yours, was that me?
That was me.
All right.
You switch seats with Scott, that way.
All right. All right, so, Michael on the right now, all right. All right, let's see, okay, so these are, this is the really high-level takeaways, just, you know, if you remember nothing else, here's the key pieces of information. So the budget request is forty-two point eight million, just slightly over that, that's just under three percent increase on last year's budget, and it's one point two million dollar increase. So, as I'm sure you remember, we're looking at two different assessment methodologies at the moment, the current, or, you know, the one that's in the regional agreement, and proposed changed methodology, and that is either two point five percent increase in Harwich's assessment, we go with the original one, and like, almost a zero percent increase if we go with the new proposed assessment methodology. So I have COVID up here, but really, it's just to say that although COVID is continuing to impact our operations, it isn't having a huge or significant impact on our budget, and that's because we have received a lot of state and federal funding to offset what costs there have been related to, you know, like nursing and supplies, we've been able to plug those gaps with federal funding, and that will be in place for the next few So staffing, obviously staffing is one of the biggest drivers of our budget, really, we've no major changes planned for staffing, we are hoping to add one special education teacher at Harwich Elementary School, but that will be offset by a reduction in a classroom teacher, where because of enrollment, we just don't need another grade four teacher, and so we'll be able to reduce that position, so there's a net zero impact on our full-time equivalent headcount. And finally, on our programs, we don't have any, all right, there we go, the budget, so we're not, we're not setting up any major new programs, but we are hoping to continue to invest in the programs we have, particularly, we have a new English literacy aid program at elementary schools, we wanna continue investing in that. So, just, you know, when we put the budget together, at the center of what we're doing and what's driving our decisions is what's good for students, so first and foremost, it's about what works for students, you know, for their education in the classroom, and what supports them. And then, to put, you know, what that, what that means in effect is employee benefits are huge impacts, you know, so firstly, we start with students, what they need most is teachers, and what that drives a big part of our budget, and it's employee benefits changing, it really makes a difference, and then also the, the school choice and charter tuition that we have to pay, so when students leave Chatham or Harwich and go to other public school districts, not Monomoy, then that is a cost for us, but then equally, when we have students coming in, that affects our revenue. Property insurance, debt, service, our district tuition, those are all items that are helping drive the budget, and I'll give you the actual figures related to those. But also informing those decisions, coming through students, is, you know, policies that we have to follow, so there's legal policies affecting the number of students, the number of staff needs to be in place for special education, there's also our own targets around class size, and the strategic plan, which is put in place where the districts identify the priorities, those are all influencing our decisions. And the other side of the picture, you've got our revenue, so that's like the school choice I mentioned and charter tuition, the students coming in, circuit breaker, which is special education reimbursement that we receive from the state, and grants that also help, and again, I'm gonna go through all those quickly, no, don't worry, I'll be quick. And then, there's also, then when you start to look at the assessments, you have other types of revenue, which is our state, and general fund offsets, and then all this combines to calculate the assessments, but of course, just coming back to students are our focus. So, there's the figures, big and bold, are an increase of just under three percent on last year's budget, maybe just point out, the last year's budget was like a less than one percent increase from the year before, so both, so still, both years still below inflation. And just to put that in context, so that is, you know, it's more than we've had in the last couple of years, we've really been really keeping a very low budget in the last few years, very small increases, but it is right about the average, maybe a little under average since the district was formed. So I apologize a little bit, because I know there's a lot of detail and information on that slide, but really, I wanted to really sum up exactly what's driving our budget. So the first thing is just our staffing contractual increases, so that's over six-hundred-thousand dollars, and that's just the existing staff we have, and the contractual increases that are allowed under this, teachers and other union contracts, so they have steps and lanes, and they get them as they move forward, and cost of living increases, and all those contracts were settled last year. We also have our health insurance increase, so that was, you know, we are like Harwich, we're part of the Barnstable Community, eh, the Barnstable, the Cape Cod.
Cape Cod Municipal Health.
Cape Cod Municipal Health, I like, which acronym is it? So, and so we're part of them with Harwich, and the percentage increase was three percent, which was a little lower than we budgeted, which was good, but it is an increase, because last year, we, you know, we had that premium holiday for one month, so because we don't have that this year, the increase is a little greater than three percent. Just because of the way the calculation works, we saw a big increase in our Barnstable Community Retirement Association payments this year, that's how much we pay for our staff who are not part of the Massachusetts Teachers Retirement System, our staff who are part of Barnstable County Association, and that's just based on your share of salaries across the association, and ours went up this year unfortunately. And like, we have a list of budget priorities, and I'm gonna go through that, a little bit more information, and property insurance has proven a big cost increase for us each year, just as, you know, insurance companies evaluate the risk of buildings on the state, on the Cape, and the cost of reconstruction is going up. There are some, you know, good, good news points in the budget, school choice reduction, so that's the amount it costs us to pay for students who choose to go to other public district, school districts, we have fewer students doing that than historically, and that's driving down our costs. Similarly, we saw a drop in charter school tuition this year, which has helped to reduce our costs, there's, I have the high school project up there, so this isn't really a reduction, this is just our scheduled payments, so the way the debt payments for the high school construction are scheduled to just go down each year, but that just gives us a little bit less of a payment required, and then all other changes in the budget, so that's everything else amounts to a hundred and thirty-three thousand production. So, that's the entire budget, right there, that's all, everything that's driving, you know, that increase is summed up there. Obviously, one of the big things driving our budget is enrollment, we saw a big drop in enrollment, you know, last year due to COVID, kind of leveled off this year, and so, eh, we've not seen a big drop, and it's, but I suspect, you know, prior to COVID, we were on a gentle downward trend, and I think, looking ahead, we're gonna maintain that trend after, you know, the impact of COVID has been fully accounted for. And we are reducing our staffing as we, in the last, as we go, so we kinda reached a peak around two thousand nineteen, but we've continued to see our staffing come down since then. Staffing is driven by enrollment, it's also driven by student needs, so particularly around special education, but we've been managing that carefully, but not expecting any major changes for next year. One of the big aims of the district's budget is to maintain a certain level, certain number of class sizes, and we're able to do that with this budget. As we go through this budget, and I'm sure you have a similar process in the town, you know, the principals and directors tell us what priorities they need to see funded in order to continue to meet the needs of the students, and deliver on the strategic plan, and the items, we prioritize those, we review them, and these are the ones that made it into the budget this year. There's some funding around staffing, as I say, it's not a net increase in teachers' FTE, because we are reducing one FTE, while we're hoping to add another one, we are hoping to increase the number of custodians at the middle school, where they've been slightly under the square footage for custodians, always been a bit lower at the middle school, we're hoping to rectify that, and then a couple of other smaller items. We're also continuing to invest in textbooks, that's a really, and instructional materials, a real big focus, particularly at the high school, where we really need to catch up, for example, the math program hasn't had a textbook for the last few years, and that's been a priority for the principal there to address. We've also implemented a new ELA curriculum, English curriculum, at the elementary schools, which is proving very successful, and the principals there are really happy with how it's going, but it's got a lot of materials, and the students are loving it, so we're a bit of a victim of our own success, because the students are taking the materials and using them, and reading them, and taking them home, and benefiting a lot from them, but it needs our continual investment. And then there's a few other smaller things around classroom furniture, they want replaces, and, you know, pro, cameras for the high school program, these are sort of things that just need to be, unfortunately, have to be replaced every now and then, and these haven't been replaced in some time. These are a couple of other things, I'll just rattle through these, these are other things, the staffing changes that are happening, don't impact very far twenty-three budget, though really, one is, we have added some special education instructional assistance, that's pursuant to IE Plan, IEP, plans that we have for individual students and the needs that they have, they have been, in some cases, offset by some that we've been able to reduce. We added a team chair position earlier this year, a nursing position, but that is funded through our COVID-related grants, it was seen from the state. And then, and we'll talk about this in some more detail, but with the new assessment methodology that we're looking at, where it'll, you know, each town will essentially pay for its own elementary school's budget, we've been really going through all our staffing, particularly shared staffing, to make sure they're in the right place, so if somebody's spending point two of their time at Chatham, or point six at Harwich, we're making sure that that much is in their budget, so that's been a process we've been going through this year, and written link to that, also reviewing guidance and psychology staffing. All right, I know I'm going very fast and kinda jumping all over the place, but technology is a big investment for the district, we're spending almost two-hundred-thousand dollars, we're not, the model the district has adopted.
Michael, can I, can I hear up while we're just, before we get onto the, this aspect of it, in the previous slide on special nursing physicians, this, I thought I'd find something in here, it's the additional help with mental health, with all the problems we're going through now.
Yeah.
Any help with the kids on that aspect?
So that's a great point.
So we, we are, we are, as Michael mentioned, we have these SRO funds, you know, the COVID relief funds, and the conversations that we've been having with the school committees, we're carrying additional clinical supports there, so we anticipate adding two clinicians/ counselors going into next year to support sort of the mental health needs of students as we transition out, hopefully, knock on wood, of the COVID pandemic. So, so that's, that's in there, it's just outside of the budget and in the grants.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that's one of, we're very lucky that we're receiving, you know, almost two, over two million dollars from the state, this, for the next three, well, from the federal government over the next three years, so that's allowing us to meet some of those needs through those state, federal grants.
Unfortunately, they'll, they'll be real, we, we know that, so.
Yeah, and we're already seeing it.
Just on that same subject, when you said clinician slash counselors, are they two different types of roles?
At the moment, and I mean, is it, we're, you know, we're still evaluating, but at the moment, we have in the, the budget for the grants, an adjustment counselor at the high school, and a social worker for the district. We're also looking at some contract services for mental health, professional supervision, so that provides support to our professionals providing mental health supports in the district.
Thank you.
Hey, all right, so I had jumped onto technology, because, you know, that's a big part of our, you know, the way we teach, particularly since COVID, we aren't, so the way, yeah, the model the district has been using is we lease devices, so we have a number of different leases ongoing, we're not adding to that, we're continuing the ones we have, and that adds up to almost two-hundred-thousand dollars in classroom technology. So that kinda leads me on to our capital plan, so I've kind of rationalized the capital plan this year, so in the past, we used to have a lot of items on there that weren't strictly speaking capital, because capital is only items which have a unit price of five-thousand dollars or more, or a project price of a hundred and fifty-thousand dollars or more, so actually, very few projects we undertake meet that criteria, so you'll see, we've only got like big things on here, like the roofs, boilers, vehicles, and this, we've put this together in a, what is that, seven-year plan, six, seven-year plan, is where we, how we expect to see this capital spent over the next few years. This plan may change as needs develop, so we might find that we're able to keep pushing something a bit further down the road, if, you know, boilers continue to fire, as they seem to be working well, but we just wanna make sure it's on horizon, on our horizon, so we have a plan for it, and we're not taken by surprise if something goes badly. The big projects that we have at the moment are the middle school roof and the Chatham Elementary School roof, both of which we're in the process of applying to the MSBA, that's Massachusetts School Building Authority, who would help to fund those projects if they went ahead. And so under the way the new assessment works, the Chatham Elementary School roof would be paid for just by Chatham, whereas the middle school roof would be split between the two towns under the share, because it's a shared use building. Right. And although I have taken some of those things, you know, the smaller items out of our capital plan, we do still have a extensive capital improvement plan, if you like, those smaller items which are extraordinary maintenance projects, and these are the ones we've prioritized for next year, doing some carpet replacement at the middle school, control systems at the high school, and a few other security alarms, we're also starting the process of replacing smoke alarms throughout our buildings, that's kinda gonna be an ongoing project to do that over time, the ones we have, they're working, so that's good, but we just know they've been advised that they're gonna, they're out of date, and they will be obsolete soon. And we'll continue to fund the stabilization fund. Wait for it, all right, hey, so, there is a couple of different types of revenue, so this revenue, actually, these funds come off the budget, so the budget number you see is already net of this type of revenue. So, school choice is the money we receive from, eh, when students from other districts come into our, eh, schools, we've not seen any reduction in that, so while we are seeing a reduction of students leaving, though we're not seeing a reduction in the number of students coming, so we're still retaining kids, and we're still just as attractive to students outside the district, so that's great news. A circuit breaker, that's funds that we receive from the state to help offset the cost of special education for students who have, who have reached a certain threshold of cost, and then grants and S R, so S R is the COVID funds we're getting from the federal government. And not, those funds aren't really, you know, so although we are seeing a lot more in the COVID funding, it's not, you know, it's not reducing our budget, because it's not offsetting costs, allowing us to get other resources which otherwise we couldn't afford, but otherwise, so there's no major impact in this revenue on our budget. So the next attractive green slide you'll see any minute now.
Michael, before you leave this slide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, if there wasn't a delay, I'd be able to get through the mic faster.
The circuit breaker, is that a flat sum, or is that dependent on the student set of the program?
So it's dependent on, so basically, each year, we submit a file to the state that explains how much we've spent on students with receiving special education.
So it's a year lag then, it's a big sum?
Yeah, so there's a year lag, and then you get an extra year to spend it, so often, the money we're spending next year will be related to the year last year's, eh, costs. So I always, I always counsel people, because I say, look, a good circuit breaker is not necessarily a good thing, that just means we've spent more money, I mean, it's a year behind, I mean, I've never seen, I'm not saying I don't want less money, but, you know, it just means we've spent more.
What percent is the state, what's their formula for that?
So the, the state's target, I think it's seventy-five percent, and they've been relatively close to that in the last few years, so they have changed the formula recently, and now, under the, you know, Student Opportunity Act, which I'll mention again in a moment, but that was the act passed a couple of years ago to increase funding, and one of the things it did is included in circuit breaker transportation, so in the past, it was only ever, you weren't allowed to include transportation in your circuit breaker claim, but now we can include that, and so we have students who are, you know, they're Monomoy students, but we're not able to meet their needs in the district, and so we transport them to schools, you know, public or private schools outside of the district, and that transportation can be very costly, and so that, that cost can now be part of our circuit breaker claim, so that should help to increase it over the coming years, as long as it's funded by the state, so this is like kinda, you know, to and fro, like our claim will go up, but it depends what percentage the state funds.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all right, we're on, so this is the, you know, so, so that's, so the blue revenue was offset the budget, this revenue offsets assessments, so we have the budget figure, and then before we calculate assessments, we look at these figures. So, the nice thing this year was our, eh, and actually, I'll just jump to the next slide, because it's, it's not as pretty, but it's got more information in it, so it's, their chapter seventy funding, you know, that's the main funding mechanism the state has, and our, eh, revenue from chapter seventy went up, you know, almost two-hundred-thousand dollars, eh, so that's a big, that's an increase, and that's because of the Student Opportunity Act, and the state has given more funding primarily this year to low-income students, and so that's driven that number this year for us. Our charter school tuition, eh, that's the money we receive for students, so actually, the state gives us an offset for, and we have to pay for students to go to charter schools, so to kinda lessen the blow, the state gives us some money over, and it dwindles over a year, three years, I think, but that's a little bit of money to offset that cost to the state, eh, this, the district. Medicaid and interest, they're both down, and the other one that's up is transportation, and that's the state's funding, and the governor's budget that we've seen so far has seen an increase in our transportation, eh, revenue, that's the money the state gives to regional districts to offset their increased transportation costs. All right. So, there we go, so, this is basically, you know, my very quick summary, so we've got like forty-two point eight million dollars, five, almost six million of that can be paid for through our revenue, that's really chapter seventy, and then the rest has to be split between the two towns. So we've got the budget, and I'm moving on to talk about the assessment process. So, we have two assessment methodologies before us, I don't, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail about these, you know, the current assessment methodology, the both methods start with your minimum local contribution, that's the number that's set by the state based on the foundation enrollment, that's all the kids in your town who can go to, who go to public schools, that's based, that determines your minimum local contribution, that has gone up because the Student Opportunity Act also is, eh, influences that, and then the rest, so once both towns have paid their minimum local contribution, the rest of the money is split up based on a three-year average of your foundation enrollment, that's a really high-level summary. And then the new method is very similar, except that you both towns pay their minimum contribution, and then both towns pay for their elementary school, and then the rest of the costs are split up based on foundation enrollment share. So, so whichever method you use, foundation enrollment is important, and foundation enrollment for Chatham didn't really change from last year to this year, but for Harwiches, it actually went down, so that means Chatham's share of the budget increased slightly, and so that's why the assessment increase for Harwich is relatively low compared to previous And what, just I'll very quickly explain this chart, so the orange line is that required minimum contribution, and so you can see that that just keeps increasing, and the blue line is the enrollment, foundation enrollment, and that has gone down in the last few years. All right, so this is the, this table is basically the calculation of the assessments for each town, so first of all, you assess that minimum local contribution, and you can see that Harwich has went up almost four-hundred-thousand dollars, but Chatham's went up more than four-hundred-thousand dollars, and that is, you know, as a percentage, that's a much bigger increase for Chatham than Harwich. So even though the rest of the numbers, you know, are more in, you know, are increasing more for Harwich, they never, they never quite offset that big increase for Chatham at the start. So we have the operating assessment, which is based on foundation enrollment, as is capital and debt, and transportation is based on the actual number of students coming to Monomoy. So transportation is down because we have. So transportation is down because we have, uh, that big increase. Remember that we had that big increase in state funding to help offset transportation. Debt is down because we just have the scheduled debt payments are going down. And capital is down because I changed how we do the capital. Well, I'm not, I'm not really changing that, I've just applied the, the rules more strictly. And so there's just fewer things in capital. And those items, they're in the budget, they're just in the operating budget. And it doesn't really make much difference because, uh, the, it's the same percent, it's the same foundation enrollment percentage to split it up whether it's operating or capital. But, so that all comes out to an increase of just shy of two hundred and eighty thousand, I'm sorry, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. For Harwich, it's just two point five percent. Or a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase for Chatham, that's almost three percent. So any questions on that before I go into the next one?
Do you have any questions?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Mary?
No.
Michael? Michael, do you have any questions before we go on to the next slide?
I'm good for now, Julie, thank you.
Thanks.
So the next slide is, oh, there we go, is, this is the methodology using the alternative, the proposed method. Starts with the minimum local contribution again. And then A, then it assesses the, the amount over that minimum local contribution. So whereas in the previous method, it's just a straight percentage based on foundation enrollment, in this method, you give each town has got its school, elementary school first. And so you can see that Harwich's operating assessment above that minimum contribution actually goes down, whereas this is, there is a significant increase to Chatham. Transport, then, transportation is pretty much the same, uh, transportation and debt are the same as in the previous slide. The only other change is in capital. So under the current methodology, when we are looking at doing the Chatham Elementary School budget roof, under the current methodology, that's split based on a foundation enrollment. Under this methodology that's up here now, Chatham pays for the whole of their own roof. And that's what's in the proposed agreement changes. And that's why Chatham has more of that capital and A Harwich has less. So all that amounts to an increase of just shy of eight thousand dollars for Harwich, but almost a million dollars for Chatham. So obviously, does that, so that's, you know, also a big change in the assessment methodology. Probably something you'll be pleased to see, but A, that will rely on it getting through votes at the town meetings and so on. So it is a swing, when we talked about this last year, I think we talked about a swing of about six hundred thousand dollars. So it's more than that, and really, that's because of the enrollment change, it's really the enrollment. And the enrollment, slightly because of the Student Opportunity Act increasing funding and increasing the size of the minimum local contribution. But it's the fun, it's the enrollment that really is the driving force behind that change and why it's a little more than we thought it would be. But it's still something, you know, it's still just shy of seven hundred thousand dollars, or a bit under seven hundred thousand dollars, so it's right back. All right, that's everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have, did you want to do anything more, Scott, before I go to the members?
No, go, questions, fine.
I'll start with Michael, so, Michael, do you want to start with any questions?
Thank you, Julie. Um, I guess the, one of the questions I have is, let me take these phones out. One question I have is why we're talking about, or why we just looked at the proposed methodology. There's no shot at Harwich getting that this year, is there?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Yeah.
So that is, the proposal at the moment is for those, the articles to go to town meetings this year.
So, yeah, so I, I sent to the town manager, uh, proposed warrant articles that we've shared with both towns that were, because I think last time we were here, I think the conversation was to have the school district's attorney start to draft warrant language. So we have some draft warrant articles for both Harwich and Chatham. Dropped in the financial figures that are in this. Uh, the warrant articles are written so that if passed in both towns, uh, they're, they're written in a way that, uh, that is if the other town says yes and Desi says yes. Meanwhile, we are working with the Department of Education, Desi, to, uh, to make sure that they're, you know, with us, on board with any change that happens. And, you know, so we have been running drafts ever since we started this project a couple of years ago, by them so that they're on board and they, they are on board with the concept of us doing this as a two-step process where we address the regional agreement, all things financial first. And then at a subsequent town meeting, go back and, and revise all of that obsolete language that's in there. Because our regional agreement doesn't even use the word Montomoy because at the time that that agreement was written, the, the school district was, you know, just coming together and there wasn't a name for it. You know, and there's a whole section on how you build the district. So, so we'll go back at a subsequent town meeting to clean up obsolete language. This is just addressing all things financial.
Right, so, and we're just doing that to make sure that we're all streamlining both depending on what happens.
Right, yeah. But, but they're written in a way and, you know, and the presumption is that, that it ideally gets passed at both town meetings. Desi approves it and we'd be able to implement it in this upcoming fiscal year, which is why it shows up in this presentation.
Okay, thank you. Michael, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. Uh, I'm not sure I got my answer, but I, I'm struggling a little bit with the, um, internet connection here. But even if it's voted by Harwich and Chatham this year, will that be approved enough to make the change for this budget?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I think I'm going to reserve the bulk of my, uh, comments for the next time we discuss this. But I would, I would say that, you know, Michael, at the outset of this, you said standard three percent increase. Uh, and, and me looking at a forty-two million dollar budget with a one point two four million dollar increase, there's nothing standard that should be even mentioned about that. Um, I was pleased to see the healthcare number come down to the three percent. Uh, I was concerned that you were leaving that in there at the six percent. Um, and then the only other, the only other thing I would say is I'm, I am a little disappointed that the town of Harwich didn't have a seat at the table for contract negotiations because six hundred and eighty-five thousand of this budget is related to staffing. And, and anyone that's paying attention knows that the struggle that the town of Harwich is having on the non-school side right now with contracts and budget and being able to present a, an acceptable budget to town meeting. And, and this is, this is quite an increase. Uh, and I don't see, I hope, but I don't see Chatham to spend a million dollars more this year. I, I certainly see Harwich voting to not spend, um, an additional seven hundred and supporting the article. But I really don't see that Chatham's going to jump up, uh, to do that. So I think we're probably a year or two away from any real savings. Uh, I'll save the rest of my comments for later.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Larry?
No, thank you. Yeah, more optimistic that we'll go through town meeting, we'll get a count on this year's budget. Just for the record, I think last year, uh, roughly six hundred thousand dollars of the assessment of Harwich was for the, uh, supporting the elementary school. So if you take that away, uh, from the one million dollars, uh, the increase in Chatham looks a lot less. What they're doing is picking up the, uh, the difference in, in this, basically, out supporting the school. What, uh, Michael's comment on the increase in salary, what, what's our current, uh, salary level number now?
So it's about nineteen million.
Okay.
Off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yep, that's all I have, thank you. We, I'm just hoping we all push, get behind this, both towns and get through town meeting.
Yeah, and Larry, I'm cautiously optimistic that, uh, that Chatham will support it too. You know, essentially, it's, it's a six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar swing between the two towns. And again, the warrant articles are written in such a way that, that presuming it passes each, it talks about, you know, that a town would vote to support this amount of money in Harwich. And presuming that Chatham and Desi say yes, that, you know, that Harwich would not have to pay six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars worth and that Chatham wouldn't end up paying six hundred and seventy, you know, so they're, they're written in such a way. And, and really, it's, I think the focus is just on letting, you know, Chatham taxpayers understand. And, you know, what we heard very clearly from Chatham parents is that they want to keep their, their elementary school, but also understand that it, it is getting smaller. And that, that the cost of keeping that, that small elementary school going is that six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That, you know, that, I don't think there was, I, I don't think anybody really understood the, sort of the economy of subscale issue of the, the differences in size between the two elementary schools when the regional agreement was crafted. But it's clear, looking back over time, and as, as Chatham Elementary School has shrank at a faster rate than Harwich Elementary School, that that, you know, that to keep, you know, both elementary schools going, and, and clearly, that's what Chatham parents want, there's a cost, you know, there's a cost to that and, and that Harwich shouldn't be carrying that bill. And I, I think when we spoke just a couple of weeks ago with the Chatham Select Board, I, I think their Select Board is fully behind supporting, you know, supporting this measure.
Thank you. Are you good now?
Yeah, thank you.
Mary?
Yes, thank you for a, uh, a really nice overview. It was easy to follow and lots of good numbers, so I liked that. I want to go on record that I fully support education and I think the Montomoy district is outstanding. But I am not one of those people that thinks you either support the school or you talk money. I think there's room to do both. In looking at some of the numbers you gave us over from two thousand, uh, sixteen to proposed twenty twenty-three, the budget's gone up almost twenty percent. In that same time period, the decrease in students is eight and a half percent. And I just think I'd like you to sharpen your pencils. I think there's a way, I would like to see this come in as a flat budget, the same as last year. So that's my, uh, proposal. The other thing I would like to request when you come in with the more detailed, a great one-to-two-page summary that shows the last two years that we have actuals for, twenty twenty-two budget, twenty twenty-two year-to-date, and twenty twenty-three, so we can look at. I love all the detail, but it's nice to have a one-to-two-page summary. So I, I would appreciate that. Thank you both.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got two questions, one's at thirty thousand feet and one's at about three inches, uh, so if you bear with me. Herefore, when you brought in a redline version of the, uh, the document, there was in there provision to change, uh, the methodology about the use of the schools, uh, from, uh, requiring two-town meeting votes, uh, to do that. You know, say you were going to make the K through three, or K through two and then a three and four, uh, model. I just want to get it on the table with an explicit answer. That's not really what we're talking about now. It's not, there isn't going to be language forthcoming with the change in the agreement that will, that'll allow the town meeting to vote to never come back to the town meeting?
No.
Okay, that, that's all I wanted. The other one is, uh, before I get to a comment about, uh, what is legitimate to say to, uh, to Chatham in the discussion, not their Select Board, but the citizenry. Uh, before I get to that, though, it's been a pet peeve because, uh, the girl that we're raising now went through, uh, Harwich Elementary and but for one teacher, she never would have seen cursive writing. As a matter of fact, we rolled up in front of a marshal's and she said, what does that say? It, it concerns me because foundational documents of the country, like the U.S. Constitution, Declaration of Independence, are, are written in script. Uh, and you either are taking somebody else's word for it if they start printing it, or you have a citizenry that actually can read it. So I, I noted that you had something in there, uh, about, uh, you know, letters.
Yeah, writing without tears.
Writing, yeah. Is that all just writing styling or is that, uh, or, or is there any chance that that could even be brought into some sort of curriculum?
Cursive is, cursive is still in there. You know, so that's, that's, that's part of the, of the writing process. So it's, it's, it's not a, it's, it's not a, a completely lost art and it's something that we do teach at the elementary level. So, so ideally, they, you know, our students should be coming out of elementary school able to read and write in cursive, whether they're like me, and once they get out of elementary school, they stop writing in cursive, maybe another story altogether.
As a consumer, that's why I'm bringing it up because, uh, only two out of the five grade levels touched on that. Uh, and it got to the point where I was showing her at home how to do cursive writing. Because I, I kind of consider that important to be able to think on your own. The, the final thing, this isn't about you, but I mean, it's the way you pitched this here. I just want to be able to make sure that the Chatham citizenry understands, we're not trying to offload our obligations onto them. And, and you're saying that, you know, it shifts a lot of, uh, finances, you know, to them in this budget. The context of that is if they had remained their own district and every year they were budgeting, it would be nowhere near what's going on right now. Because they have been getting relief i- in each successive year because of the foundation budget and because of the enrollment. And that vector has been getting wider, which Mary has picked up on and I, and I've said things about in the past. Again, our kids need to be educated well, but I'm not sure that a dollar equals a grade point, uh, necessarily. It's all in how you execute what you're doing. I just want to make sure that the Chatham folks understand it's about being more equitable in the distribution and trying to correct something that was baked into the cake and the original foundational documents that have gotten us to this place. Because you, as we all know, and I've brought this up, in future years, and I've said it just this way, today's fourth grader is tomorrow's eleventh grader. So if we've got a disparity in the elementary school, it's going to grow into the, uh, middle school and the high school eventually. So this is a great idea, it's a great first move. But in the long term, we've got a lot of work to do to be able to come up with some sort of equitable arrangement that reflects, you know, what's fair to each town.
Thank you, Don. So I would like to echo, uh, the comments of, uh, thank you for the information, it's extensive and I appreciate it. Um, I'm trying to boil it down, there's so many different numbers, math is not my strong point. And, uh, I'm just trying to look at it in terms of, uh, you know, I see that we're getting a special ed teachers and, and getting, not rid of, but a, a fourth grade teacher is no longer needed. So that's a swap. So the same salary kind of range and all that, right? Then I understand the property increase, the, the insurance costs are skyrocketing for everybody, so I, I get that figure. And it's great that you have the decrease in the health. But then I also thought I saw, uh, an added secretary or?
We have a, at the moment at the high school, there isn't a year-round secretary. So we have a period during the summer when students need things like transcripts or, you know, a help, or when we have new students enrolling and there's nobody there to help do that. So it's just an existing person to do a few extra.
So that person would be working over the summer that would then make them full-time?
So it's just, it's just extending that. And, and I know in my, in my former district, and it's the nature of, if you have a high school,
Yeah.
you, you oftentimes need a registrar year-round. And, you know, this, this would provide those registrar services to be able to have that year-round and also to accommodate families that are new and, you know, new and need to register during the summer. So it's, it's just providing clerical support at the high school during the summertime. Not, not, you know, not adding somebody, but just extending, essentially having somebody work two days or two months more during the year.
Okay. And then just in terms of the decrease in students, I mean, it's, it's probably difficult to answer, but with COVID, I mean, we saw a lot of people move, right? I mean, but is it people that, and, and do you have a way to gauge it? I know plenty of families who had second homes in, you know, other states that went to them and took the kids with them and put them in private schools. Now, do you expect those kids to come back or?
Yeah, so, so actually, I think as a school district, we were the beneficiary of that. You know, so, you know, so both Harwich and Chatham have second homes. And I think one of the things we can be very proud of as a school district is we generally offered a lot more in-person, face-to-face learning than most people saw anywhere in their non-summer homes. And there were a few summer families that, that opted to come here and take advantage of what we offered. And we found some who chose to stay. And, you know, we have students that will be graduating this year who, you know, who have spent just, you know, over a year with us. You know, again, you know, they're families, you know, saying, hey, you know, you know, they, they came down for the summer and heard what we're doing and stayed. So, so we actually have seen. So, so we actually have seen a little bit of an increase there. I would say it's, it's, you know, fairly negligible. What we, what we're still seeing is, because last year there was a distance learning option that was available to families, and the state had that go away. There's, there's still some families at the elementary level who have, you know, have elected to homeschool again this year. So again, it's a fairly small number, you know, a dozen, two dozen tops. You know, so, so I think when we get to the other side of COVID, I think we're going to see a few more elementary students coming in the door, and we may continue to see families who chose to weather the storm here, learned that they can go and work remotely and have the Cape be their year-round, you know, home. So I think, I actually think as a school district, we benefit and will benefit in the long run from, you know, from a slight increase, or at least, you know, not see the attrition that, that we had been seeing as a school district, you know, for the last few decades. I, I think it slowed a bit, so I think it's balanced out well that way.
Okay. And then I'm just thinking in terms of, and I know to your point about there always being a lag in terms of the services, the special needs services, the monies that come back. So again, I would imagine with COVID, at the preschool level, you don't really know what you're facing, or, right? Is that?
So I think I would say that we're starting to see an increase in the level of need of preschool students, partly because they missed out, you know, we do, normally we do early intervention, and we missed out on some of that early intervention during COVID. So students either were not identified as needing extra help, or weren't receiving it. And so when they're now coming to preschool or kindergarten, we're seeing that those, their needs have gone unmet for a longer period of time than we'd normally aim for. And so they're presented with higher-level needs that have been unmet, and that's part of the reason for that special education teacher, is partly to, you know, help meet those needs, but yeah. So doesn't, I don't know if there's evidence yet that COVID has readily led to an increase in special education needs, but it did make it harder for us to meet those needs that were present.
That's sort of a, that's a variable that you really can't know until it's, it's in your face, really, right? I mean, and that's a big number. So, I mean, I think we as a board in both towns, both Chatham and Harwich, need to think about that proactively, you know? We don't know, to the point of mental health, we also don't know what we don't know, because we haven't seen some of these kids yet. So I think on a budgetary level, everybody needs to be prepared for that.
Yeah, I think one of the places you see it show up in the budget, and some of, you know, if we really kind of get into the details behind it, one of, one of the special ed teachers that we're adding here is, there's an intensive needs preschool teacher that's, you know, that's being added. And what we've found because of COVID, you know, so early intervention, you know, happens, you know, in the infant toddler, you know, early preschool, you know, range, when either you're taking your child to preschool, or you're taking your child to the pediatrician, and somebody starts to notice that there's, you know, that there are, you know, there's a developmental delay there. You know, so, you know, so, you know, the, you know, that, you know, that infant toddler, you know, preschooler gets into this early intervention system, and for three- and four-year-olds, the school district has an early intervention integrated preschool. Well, in the early stages of COVID, families weren't getting out to the pediatrician as much, or they weren't taking, you know, they weren't sending their children to a preschool. So, so we were seeing fewer kids getting involved with early intervention. So now they're showing up on our doorstep now as three-year-olds and four-year-olds, but they haven't been getting the support prior. So we're actually finding a higher-need child coming in the door in preschool and needing to add intensive support at that preschool level. So, you know, so in, you know, and needing to make up ground that ideally should have been addressed earlier. So we, you know, so we, we're seeing on that end. And then just to, to speak to one of, you know, one of Mary's concerns, and I appreciate, Mary, the, the notion of, you know, if enrollment's dropping, should, you know, should staffing drop? I think we also have to acknowledge that some of the demographics in our two towns are, have also been changing over the last decade. So that when I first came here, we had, I think it was like one and a fractional English-language learner teacher. And, and I think budget presentation after budget presentation after budget presentation, we were talking about an increase in a need to, to add staffing to meet mandates that we have there, you know, so that, you know, so that we've seen the demographics change that way with staffing that we've needed to add an entire layer on that we hadn't had previously. And we've also seen some of our, some of our families are also, the demographics there are changing, where we've seen a higher need, there are more families that, that, that socioeconomically struggle, particularly seasonally, you know, here on the Cape, and that number has increased over time. So there are, there are things that have actually changed about the demographics of the families that we've served over the last 10 years that have created a situation to provide more supports in their, in the budget. And, you know, frequently in these budget presentations, it's, it's, we're adding staffing to support the families that we have.
Okay. So, and, and some of those things, as you mentioned, are state-mandated, so, I mean, you have to meet those.
Right.
Right. And then I, I'm just making, I'm just making the comment because I think there's a lot of things with COVID that we haven't really fully prepared for, because hopefully we're coming out of it, but we don't really know some of the variables. I mean, not just at the school level, but, you know, at the elementary school level, but even the high school level, so.
And, and just in terms of a, a presentation that, you know, that I wish, you know, everybody on this board could have seen, is our two elementary school teachers gave a presentation about the new elementary ELA curriculum that we've implemented. And it's, it's very data-driven, and, you know, I would say conceptually how it's different from the way we've done things before. In the past, and even when all of us likely went to school, and you go to a class, everybody in the class reading the same book. And, you know, so instead, we have an ELA program that we put in place at the elementary school, where the students are reading texts at the level that they're at. And, you know, so, you know, so in some classrooms, there might be eight different levels of students that the teacher's working with, reading texts at their level, that are pushing them to accelerate. And, and we're logging how that, you know, how those students are growing, and we're seeing tremendous growth happening with this new reading program, that I think is really refreshing at a, at a time when, you know, when the state's saying, hey, and the federal government's saying, hey, use these, use this relief money to, to help close learning gaps that might have happened. And the learning gaps were greatest with our younger kids. And you're seeing the data that's coming out at the two elementary schools with this new ELA program, and the learning gaps that they're closing quickly was really refreshing. And it's, and this was just one-half years' data on what, what we've managed to do. So, so there's some great things happening there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I think that's really, the only other question I, I think I had was, in terms of the monies, and it sounds like good news, you've got less kids going off to charter school, or they're coming back. And what are the dollars that follow them when they go to charter school?
So, so it's, so when a child goes from Montomoy to a charter school, they're taking the full per pupil, so, you know, so almost $20,000. So I think if I remember the numbers in Michael's presentation, there's about $70,000, so it's probably, it's probably three or four students' worth. But we also see a huge decrease in the school choice out to other school districts, you know? So that combined, those two numbers, I think, have decreased by $165,000 in this budget, you know? So, you know, so with about $70,000 of that as charter school, and the other, you know, almost $100,000 are, are, you know, are students that would have left at $5,000 a piece to another school district that are staying because families are seeing this as the better alternative to other school districts.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, my last question is, what, what's the amount in the stabilization fund at this point? What do you have?
It's like $130,000 before we put in the, before we put in the $50,000.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, and thank you again for all the information, and we'll be in touch in terms of the additional discussions. Thank you. Michael, I just make sure Michael's all set. Do you have any other questions, Michael? Oh, sorry.
Julie, the only other question I had was, you just asked about stabilization. What's the E and D balance?
E and D balance, it's, it's around 1.8 million.
Thank you, Michael.
Did you get that, Michael?
I did, thank you very much. And thank both of you for the presentation.
And John, hold on, John?
Hi, my name, can I take the mask off?
Yeah, sure.
My name's John Chori, I'm a citizen and chair of the Finance Committee in, in the town of Harwich. Thank you, Dr. Carpenter, Michael McMillan for the presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the, able to speak. It's just a quick question. I understand the budget pretty well. I've met with the school committees a couple of times, I've read the budget, Michael's helped me. I understand the budget pretty well. One clarification point, if someone can tell me the mechanics of it, is if we go to town meeting, Harwich approves the new allocation formula, you go to town, Chatham goes to town meeting, they disapprove the, the new funding allocation formula. I've been told that it goes to a big tent meeting, and at the big tent meeting, the both towns meet on one day, and, and the presentations are made, and then the town, a vote is taken, and the majority of that big tent meeting is what determines the outcome of, of the school budget. Is that correct, or can someone correct what the, well, how do you fix, you know, reconcile those two towns?
Scott, do you want to?
Thank you.
So, again, I, I think maybe after Joe consults with Town Council on the warrant articles, I think the mechanics of the warrant articles as written would, would have us, if one town or the other doesn't pass the, the, the proposed changes to the regional agreement, that we would default to the first assessment scenario that, that was in the blue slide as opposed to the green slide. There, there is, there is a scenario, I, I think, if, you know, if, and again, I think it depends on how the warrant articles are ultimately written, and, and what, you know, what the two towns decide to have as warrant articles. But if there's a scenario where, where there's a different approach to the warrant articles in the two, and, and if Chatham approves a number, and Harwich approves a different number, the way mechanically, we had a meeting with our school district's finance team on the school committee, and, and the, our, our school district's attorney, I think the process is, the, it comes back to the school committee. The school committee can vote to, to have a revised budget, which then goes back to a, which I think goes back to the boards, and then potentially goes to each town as a separate town meeting first. If, if you still don't have a budget, then you find yourself under the big tent with a, with a district-wide vote. But I, I think there's a, I think there's a revision that happens in there. But at the end of the, if, at the end of the day, in terms of the mechanics of this, you know, we're having town meetings in, what, May?
Right.
You know, the ability to have all of that happen before the end of the fiscal year means that the district is probably operating on a 1/12 budget, you know, which is essentially the current fiscal year's budget just moved forward. And if, if this, if this process doesn't resolve itself by, I think, sometime in December, then the commissioner steps in and assigns a budget for the school district. So, and, you know, I, I think we all don't want to get to a place that we're having to go back and have a separate town meeting. So, you know, my, my hope is that we can all kind of find a way to mutually support each other and not get to that point.
All right, thank you, thank you. Any, any other questions from the public? Okay, well, so thank you very much, and we'll be talking to you again soon. Oh, sorry, Don, did you?
Yeah, this is a question, Madam Chair, I just wanted to at least posit this here. Before we agreed this big tent thing, we both have home rule charters. They're not the same charters. And I understand how, you know, the state would view this stuff, but they don't always on their regional school districts operate with towns that have home rule charters. Some of them just operate as either cities or towns. I would, I would be more comfortable finding out from our legal counsel if that indeed is what the circuit breaker kind of doomsday scenario would be, because I'm dubious about whether that's true.
Joe?
Thank you. As Dr. Carpenter mentioned, draft warrant articles were provided by school administration on Friday. I sent that right over, and John Giorgio's reviewing that. What we expect is, we have John Giorgio looking at it for Harwich, I believe it's Mark Costello for, for Chatham, and Mark Terry for the school district. So at some point in time, as we meet monthly, Scott and Michael with me and Carol, and Jill and Alex, which sounds like a sitcom from the 70s, but as, as we do our meetings, we, we have that in mind, so we expect to have, hopefully, before our next meeting, council's opinions on how each town is going to go forward. So we have, you'll see a reference in the draft material that I'm providing later on this evening, council's reviewing that. And I also want to just emphasize that, for what it's worth, the budget that I presented last week assumes the current assessment.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, so.
That's with council.
You good, Don?
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Talked to you. Now we go on to our public hearing and discussion and possible vote for, to approve the harbor management plan amendment. Can you read the public hearing, Mary?
Yes. Town of Harwich Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing on the Harbor Management Plan. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on February 14th, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 PM in the Don B. Griffin Room located at Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, for the purpose of reviewing proposed amendments to the Harbor Management Plan, Section 8.3 Class R permit, and Section 13.9 Round Cove Boat Ramp and Landing. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend. Remote participation is also offered. Please see the posted agenda for dial-in information. Signed by Michael McCaskill, Chairman Julie Kavanaugh, Larry Ballantyne, Mary Anderson, Don Howell, the Harwich Board of Selectmen, and it was in the Cape Cod Chronicle, January 27th, 2022, and February 3rd, 2022.
Thank you, Mary. John?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Rendell and Harbor Master. I'd like to just briefly go through the two changes, one relating to the R permit, and one relating to Round Cove Boat Ramp. I'll start with the R permit. It's a day charter permit, so it allows an individual with the permit to launch his boat from a trailer only at Sacquetucket Harbor for the day. He can take, he has to have a six-pack license, Coast Guard license, and he can take passengers for hire for that day trip. And once he's done with that, he has to haul his boat out that day and, and finish off his trip. We, we have 10 permits that are allowed currently, and it's been like that for years. And we saw, we started to see a steady increase in the number of folks who applied for the permit. We used to only have four or five permits every year, and then once we, we saw it, once we completed the marina, there, I think there was more interest. And anyways, last year, we had all 10 taken, and we had, had to establish a waitlist. And so I just think it's an opportunity, since there is a demand, I think there's six people on the waitlist now, six or seven people on the waitlist now, that we offer a, a couple of other opportunities for, for folks to be able to run a, a small business, so to speak, using their boats. Boats are trailable boats, they're in the range of 23 to 27-foot type, style boats. Usually it's the captain and, and then four or five passengers, they don't always take six passengers. But is it a, does it have an impact on, on the facility? Not much. have an impact on the facility? Not much. Again, the current regulation states that an R permit is limited to his truck and boat trailer and one additional vehicle, meaning the party that they're taking out. I would say most people on that waitlist already are using our boat ramp, either on a daily basis, or they purchase the seasonal ramp pass. So really, the impact is a couple of cars. And I think our facility certainly can support two additional permits that I'd like to get your permission to add. Go to the Round Cove, or you want to address those?
Do you want to go to Round Cove, or you want to do step one with the two R?
I think step one.
Why don't we do two?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
John, in the first paragraph, you can get a daily or seasonal ramp pass, and the cost is $475. Is that per day or per season? I didn't?
The cost of the R permit is $475 for the season.
Okay.
And then on top of that, they purchase a $100 seasonal ramp pass.
Okay.
Almost all of them do, because they're using it more than 10 times throughout the season.
I was just trying to understand that sentence.
Right.
Okay. Mary, do you have any?
Yeah. A couple of questions. One is, do they typically do this every day, or do they do it like 10 times a summer? What's the?
I think there's a real mix. I think some people who have an R permit probably do it a handful of times during the season. There are some that are out there pretty much every day. So it's a real mix. You know, there's somebody who has an R permit that does, goes for tuna. And so they got a bigger boat, they go further out, and it's not an everyday-type fishery, whereas some people who are just going out for striped bass or something like that, they go often.
And my other question is just parking. I've always had that concern, and I know, you know, my husband has a boat there, and it's very dicey sometimes putting the trailer in there. You're convinced we've got enough room? Is there, is there more ways to fit more trailers in there?
Well, again, I think these people are already using the ramp.
They're already there.
I mean, you know, these people who are on the R permit list, they're using our facility anyways. It's tight. I mean, we've, we're out there a lot. You've probably seen us moving trailers and making some of these real large, you know, boats are getting bigger. And so they're getting beyond the size of our trailer slips. So often, we are requiring folks to disconnect their truck, park their trailer so they're not taking up more than one space, and then co-park that vehicle in a vehicle parking space. So we try to manage it, but it's a busy, busy place.
Thank you.
Don?
I have nothing.
Nothing. Michael, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay. Want to go on to Round Cove, then?
Okay. Thank you.
Julie?
Yes?
Just as a formality, I think that the public hearing part of this, the public is invited to weigh in first, then we would close the public hearing, do board deliberation, and then vote if we so choose. So you might want to ask the public if they have anything to say on this part.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Does anybody from the public have anything to say on the Part 1 of this public hearing on the Class R permits? No, hearing nobody. You can go ahead on, John.
Okay. So the second change I'd like to make to the harbor management plan deals with Round Cove Landing and Ramp. I'm recommending that we make Round Cove Landing and Ramp available only to Harwich residents, which includes Harwich property taxpayers. This is a change. Currently, the folks who are allowed to use our boat ramp at Round Cove have to either have a seasonal ramp pass, they have to show that they have a mooring there in Round Cove. We used to say if they had a transfer station sticker, of course those were no issue stickers anymore, or if they have a beach sticker. So, non-residents currently can use not only the boat ramp, but there are no current regulations with regards to parking vehicles at Round Cove Landing. It's a small footprint. I think everybody knows Round Cove is a relatively small landing. We have 95 moorings just in Round Cove, not to speak of the 60-something we have in Pleasant Bay. So it already is a heavily-used landing and ramp. We saw a significant change a couple of years ago when Chatham introduced a waterway user fee, and they had a waterway user fee for residents and non-residents, and the non-resident fee was significant. And so people who used to use some of the landings and ramps in Chatham, I think, went to Round Cove because of that. And so that was an increase. And as you know, we recently finished our boat ramp, redid the boat ramp, and it's great. It's a, it's a great boat ramp, and I think that has increased some of the demand. So I think we need to put some measures in place to make it more usable for our residents. And so I've proposed several things that I'd like to put in place, and this would be for the period of Memorial Day to Columbus Day. That's our defined boating season per our harbor management plan. And so, you know, outside of that, people can go and park there and use the ramp or use the parking spaces. But during the boating season, there's few, there's several things that I'd like to put in place. And if you don't mind, I'll just go through them so the public understands. A specific Round Cove parking permit issued by the Harbor Master Department will be required to be displayed on any vehicle parked at the landing. A Round Cove parking permit issued by the Harbor Master Department will be required to be displayed on any vehicle used to launch a boat at Round Cove Boat Ramp. The seasonal ramp pass currently available to purchase by residents and non-residents will no longer include the use of Round Cove Boat Ramp. So just a real quick, we have a seasonal ramp pass that we currently have in place. People can pay $110, $100 for that seasonal ramp pass, and that allows them to launch at Sacquetucket, Allen Harbor, Long Pond, Round Cove, and Heron River's not regulated, so they can certainly use that, too. When we institute this, Round Cove will no longer be included in that seasonal ramp pass. How they would do it is their vehicle would have to purchase the Round Cove ramp permit, and it'd have to be displayed on the vehicle that's pulling that boat trailer. Only Harwich residents, taxpayers are eligible to purchase a Round Cove parking permit. Harwich residents/taxpayers will be allowed to purchase only one Round Cove parking permit per address for a fee of $25. Permits will be sold at the Harbor Master Department office. Proof of residency and vehicle registration required. This is an important one, because right now, we have people who show up with two or three cars when they have large parties to go out for the day, and all two or three vehicles are parked in a very limited parking space. Round Cove mooring permit holders will be provided one Round Cove parking permit at no charge. These are the permit holders in Round Cove. The assigned parking permit will have the same number as the mooring permit number. Those Round Cove mooring permit holders who are not residents of Harwich will receive one Round Cove parking permit. This is the only exception to the Harwich residency requirement, as Massachusetts general law states that assignment of moorings shall not discriminate based upon residency. So we can't have two different, you know, resident, non-resident when it comes to moorings. So the people who are non-residents that have a mooring in Round Cove will be allowed to park a vehicle to get to their, their mooring. And then it will obviously put up proper signage to ensure the public understands the regulations, and then it's up to us as a department to patrol and to manage that. And, you know, if there's somebody in violation, they'll be subject to a parking violation. So that's what I'm proposing. I think we need to put some control measures in place so that the permit holders have access and our Harwich residents have access.
Thank you, John.
Sure.
Before I go to the board, I'll go to the public so we don't forget them. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments on the Round Cove section of the changes? Hearing nobody, move to close the public?
Move to close the hearing.
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So we will close the public hearing. Michael?
Yes.
Larry?
I'm a no.
Say, no, we're closing it.
Yes.
Doing the roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Okay. So the public hearing has been closed. Now we'll go to the board members.
I certainly support this. I think John did a lot of work on this, put a lot of thought into this, and I agree with John that other towns, Orleans very recently has changed their landing regulations. Chatham definitely has. So I wholeheartedly support this and thank John for all the thought that he put into this. It's a tough decision. I think a lot of, there will be people that are impacted, but anyone that's been around Cove in July knows that we have to make some decisions. So I certainly support this.
Thank you, Michael. Larry?
Yes, I too fully support it. It was very well explained.
Thank you.
And why it was the background, and so, full support.
Thank you, Larry. Mary?
You're three for three. I fully support both as well.
Thank you.
Don?
Well, there you go.
Well, there we go.
John, I was going to be four for four here, but my question, however, is that you're, in your explanation, when you got to the point of, well, when they come in, they can show proof of, proof of residency, a taxpayer doesn't have to reside here.
If they're a taxpayer, they have a second home here, right?
That's not a residence.
Okay. Well, they have to show that they have, maybe I used the wrong term.
Yeah, I just want to pin this down.
Okay, got it.
As long as they can prove that they are paying taxes on property in Harwich.
Got it. Yes, sir.
Then that's what you meant.
My intent was?
Or a resident who's living in an apartment who, which is a resident, then.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. You had to do that. So, John, I'm in full support of this, too, and it's a lot of hard work and extra benefits for the residents, so I think it's great. The only question I have is, as you mentioned, you'll have to have patrol for that. So you'll be able to issue the tickets, or does it involve, with the chief sitting here, does it involve the police at all in terms of parking?
We currently have the authority to issue
Okay.
parking permits at Round Cove. While this is a little bit of a change on how we're doing it, I guess I can talk to the chief and see if he wants me to put another memo forward, but we currently have the authority, based upon, I think it was in 2013, we instituted those regulations regarding the ramps, and I had requested permission for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I'm just gonna, again, go around for the vote.
Want a motion?
Yeah.
Would you need both?
Yeah, I need a motion.
I move that we vote to approve the Harbor Management Plan Amendment.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Larry?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
She needs another motion.
Oh, right, for the second one, the Round Cove. Yep, sorry.
I thought that included.
I thought it had both in there when she said it.
That was the amendment that had both.
Yeah.
It's all one motion. That motion was fine.
Okay, but it was adjourned separately. That's why I'm saying that.
Well, we did it in one full motion, so.
Yeah, the agenda says the Harbor Management Plan Amendment.
Round Cove Landing, you're separate.
But it's the whole Management Plan Amendment. That's how Mary made her motion.
Yeah, I think we're fine.
Which includes both things.
Yeah.
Okay. They're both covered under the Management Plan, Harbor Management Plan. Okay. So on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. I move that we vote to approve the consent, consent agenda. First, to approve a Caleb Chase request in the amount of $1,000. A second Caleb Chase request in the amount of $1,000. A third Caleb Chase request in the amount of $999.88. A fourth Caleb Chase request in the amount of $1,000. And a fifth Caleb Chase request in the amount of $580.
Second.
Well, there's more.
Well, there's more, yes.
To approve the recommendation from the interview committee of a Hall of Fame nomination, to approve the appointment of Student Officer James Hensley to the Harwich Police Department, and to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for March 1, 2021, and July 13, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just, well, I was hoping to do them separately to kind of recognize the appointment.
Well, yeah, we can certainly do.
I do want to make a comment, though, about Ginny Don. She was an exceptional person. Is a totally worthy addition to the Harwich Hall of Fame, and it was, these kinds of people that we envisioned honoring.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
No.
Okay. Larry?
Yeah, I'm Larry.
I was gonna call you Michael.
Are you going to recognize the chief for the?
Yeah, we're gonna do that as well. Right, we're gonna separately.
I have no comments on this. I appreciate the Hall of Fame. It's always, it's great to recognize people that deserve it, and she certainly does.
She sure does, yeah. And Michael, do you have any comments on any of these? We're gonna go back to the chief in a moment on recognizing our new officer.
I'd just echo my colleague's comments about the Hall of Fame nomination, and welcome our new student officer, James Hensley, to the Harwich Police Force.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, we would like to just give you a round of applause, if that's appropriate, so that, welcome to Harwich. We're delighted to have you, and it's great to have a local. Okay, so we'll go on.
We can blow out the candles once we vote.
Oh, yeah, I gotta vote. Yeah, right. Okay, vote. Michael, he already said, but go ahead.
I'm an aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aye. So there you go. Now you have it officially. Let's move on to new business.
On a motion?
Yes, could you?
I move that we vote to approve a new 2022 Sunday Entertainment License, Morning Star Restaurant, Inc., DBA Villa Roma, 278 Route 28. They're requesting Sundays, 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, recorded or live music with amplification inside.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael, any discussion?
No, I'm an aye.
Okay. Larry?
None.
No. Mary?
No.
Don? Okay. So all in favor. Michael?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Okay. So, go ahead, Mary.
I move that we vote to approve a 2022 weekday entertainment license renewal, Morning Star Restaurant, Inc., DBA Villa Roma, 278 Route 28.
Second.
Requesting weekdays, 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, recorded or live music with amplification inside.
Still second, I guess.
Still second.
Okay, second. Any discussion? Don? Mary?
Nope.
Larry? Michael?
None.
All in favor? Michael?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you, Mary.
I move that we vote to approve one appointment to the Recreation, oh, this has got to be a discussion, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Larry, that was supposed to pitch.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Based on the interviews.
So we'll just, you want to just read C, and we'll go into the discussion?
C is a full board discussion and possible vote to approve one appointment to the Recreation and Youth Commission.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. And I'll let you two lead it off, because you had the interviews. Larry, you want to start?
Sure. First, we had really three very strong candidates for the Youth and Rec Commission, so sometimes these discussions may come up because it's a negative something, but that's certainly not the case in these. We're very, we were, I can speak for Don to this extent, we're impressed with all three of them, to be, the difference in opinion we had was more, was directional. I, my vote was for Lee Mercurial, because she impressed me. She's a young, young mother with three young, young children, and, and so I thought She's a young mother with three young children, and so I thought that was a positive, adding someone to the Rec and Youth that had youth that are using the Harwich programs. She also was impressive to me because she had actively sought out programs in other towns that were unavailable in Harwich. And I thought that having that ambition or, you know, behavior, or whatever, is to go out and look for other programs, but also to make her knowledgeable on what's going on around us, and maybe we can add that to our, to our programs. And so that was my reason for that, based on the adding another mix to the Rec and Youth of a young mother and one who was aggressively going out and seeking other programs.
Thank you, Larry. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, as Larry said, they're all, if any of them had come forward just as an individual, they would have put that person forward and we would have agreed. Initially, Larry and I had both agreed on Phyllis Thomason. The rationale that I have for that is that she's a former elected Recreation Representative from North Cape Community. She has a lot of experience in that, but she also has experience in an area that I'm somewhat concerned about. I have mentioned this for several years now. The Rec and Youth has continued to amp up their use of the funds that they derive from their fees on a revolving fund basis. Now, I know that they have to submit them, you know, and they are reviewed by Carol now, but I'd kind of like somebody with a strong financial background on that particular committee because now that they're well north of six figures in that fund, I really would like somebody at the primary level who knows what it is that they were implementing as programs and what it would cost and what they're buying and further into that. Really, they're only, when the invoices are reviewed here, they're only reviewed for them being programmatically as part of Rec and Youth. Like, you get uniforms and it appears to be, you know, athletic uniforms are for a purpose for the Rec and Youth, and that would qualify. That's not the same as the kind of controls that you would get in a budgeting situation where there would be line item listed about what programs would have what substantiating. But the balance actually tipped to me based on the other two individuals indicating that they would be willing to accept alternate positions in other organizations that we might have openings in. That was not the case with Phyllis. I had spoken to her, and she still wanted to be put forward for this and only this. So I felt like there was ample opportunity to put the other two to work with the idea that if another vacancy opened up, that I would wholeheartedly support either of them because they were both qualified to be able to do that. But it was the combination of being able to piece together an actual elected Recreation Department, Woff Cape, and her budgeting experience that I kind of really wanted to see as part of their deliberation because that's a strength that they currently don't enjoy on the Rec Commission.
Thank you, Don. Mary, do you?
You know, having read their resumes and then just hearing what Larry and Don both had to say, you know, we should be quite happy that we have three exceptional individuals that want to be on our, on our Rec Committee. And I, you know, one of the notes I made is whoever the two are who are not selected, I would hope we could talk them into another chair. I don't like being held hostage that it's this or nothing. And frankly, I got a fair number of calls on this, and I'm told the Rec Committee would like a young person with kids in the program. They don't have that expertise. I think there's enough number crunchers, including myself, that can look at budgets. I'd like a young parent, be it mother or father.
Thank you, Mary. Michael?
Yeah, this was also, this was a tough one because I think all three applicants were great, and one that Emily Broody stands out to me. But I did, I did speak to Don anyway and got how they voted, and there was two that they brought forward, and that was Leah and Phyllis, and therefore I'm gonna make my, my vote based on what the interview committee brought forward and really hope that Emily Broody is willing to be on another committee because she had a very impressive application and she wants to get involved with the town. Don, I completely agree with you on the revolving funds, but as promised, I have not let that go, and within the next two weeks, not next week because Joe's away, but after that, we did agree that we were gonna bring the revolving funds forward as part of the budget process, and that we have not seen yet, but we will be seeing that at the end of February when Joe comes back from his vacation. But I do share some of the same concerns that you share. And I would say, to Mary's point, as I read through the applications and looked at the makeup of the current committee, I think that putting somebody on there with kids in the program makes most sense to me in putting the onus on the budgetary stuff on the board and the town administrator to fix because we have far too many programs that are, are repeat programs that should fall into the budget, not into a, not into a revolving fund, in my opinion, anyway. I'm gonna lean towards Leah because I think that having somebody and having the diversity on the board, as we've all discussed, or on the committee, as we've all discussed, is super important. And we're losing John Larrabee, who had three or four kids in, I can't remember which, but three or four kids in the program, and I think replacing John with somebody with three kids in the program makes a ton of sense to me. So I'm leaning towards Leah, but I think all three resumes were great, and I really hope all three people continue to want that interest despite who we pick.
Thank you, Michael. I would agree. I mean, I think it's great that we've got three fantastic applicants. I think it's also wonderful that we're gonna have a woman on the board because I think we don't have a woman on the board either. And I think it's important, not only to have a woman, but I think it would be helpful to, to the Rec Committee to have a young perspective. So I would agree that if, you know, Leah was one and Phyllis was the other, I think it's important to bring, you know, we also have to worry about the future of the Rec Committee, so I would be in favor of going more so with Leah, only because she has a young family and brings that to the, to the committee. So, there we are. So, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to be clear, I'm not saying I wouldn't support Leah. She said some things I know to be true, and probably none of us, except for me, would have known to be true. I know when Destiny was in the Montemoy Regional School, that she had to sign up in Chatham for things because this is not that robust for some of the activities that other towns have. That was one of the things that Leah has as a strength, is she knew other places and what they were doing and why aren't we doing that, which is a great question to ask for a new person coming in. So I don't want this to come off like resisting her appointment. I just thought perhaps they could use another skill set, but I'm planning on voting for Leah anyway because that seems to be what the consensus is.
I'm just gonna confirm what Don said. You know, sometimes we can get in strong arguments. This was not one of those times because we all, we both liked both candidates. I agree with Don's point, he agreed with ours, but we couldn't come to an agreement on which one to put forth, so...
So, I mean, I think, to Mary's point, though, it'd be great if we could also get the other two to go to other committees because it's great to have their expertise, so...
I caution you about any motion because they didn't, I don't have it with me, and they did not put an expiration date on this. So we're gonna have to do that, make any motion subject to verification of what the expiration date would be.
And we can do that.
Yeah, I think we should, yeah. Okay. So can I get a motion?
I was just gonna say one other thing about bringing on Leah, since that's the one we're talking. That's a great developmental thing for a young person to start on a committee. She could sit in one of these chairs. It would be nice to have a young person, but that's a good way to get into the town, so I'm quite happy with that. So do you want a motion?
Do I officially need a motion, don't I?
Yeah.
Would you do it?
Yeah. I'd like to motion that we appoint Leah Mercurio to a position, to a full-time position in the Rec and Youth Commission, subject to the end date that the office is keeping for that particular position.
Thank you, Don.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Michael?
I just wanted to point out the process, and I, you know, I'm thankful to the interview committee and just want to point out to the public that it's not all predetermined dispositions, and in this case, it was two members of an interview committee that met and disagreed, so it came before the full board for this conversation. So I appreciate the process and thank both of the people on the interview committee for disagreeing and bringing this before the whole board and having this conversation.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Michael.
Can I insert the date?
Yes, no.
Because Larry apparently doesn't throw anything away, ever.
I know.
All right, Larry.
So I'd like to move, if you withdraw the second.
I'll withdraw the second.
I'd like to move that we appoint Leah Mercurio to Recreation and Youth Commission for a full-term position with a term to end 6/30/23.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you, Larry. So, Michael, no further discussion, correct?
I'm just wondering if Larry is allowing me to throw this away now?
No. Give it back.
Apparently not.
Okay, so let's just do a vote. Michael?
Yeah. Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So that's five. Okay.
I'd like to double back and see if I can convince Phyllis to do something else.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That'd be great.
Very impressive.
And thank you for your work on interviewing both candidates, all candidates. Okay, Mary, do you wanna...
Discussion of fiscal year 2023 Annual Town Meeting Draft Warrant, including citizen initiative petitions, received by 12:00 p.m. Friday, February 11th, 2022, per General Bylaw Article, Article I, Section 271-1.
Thank you. Joe, do you wanna?
Yes, please. Thank you, Selectman Anderson, for that introduction. This is more of a checking of requirements in the bylaw in this instance. So if I could, Madam Chair, members, very quickly, I'll just draw you to my memorandum today regarding proposed articles. First, the reference to Chapter 271 of our, of our bylaws regulates town meeting, and Section 271-1 regulates specifically citizen initiative petitions. So in accordance with our, our bylaws, the deadline for the submission of citizen initiated petitioned articles was 12 noon this past Friday, February 11th. We received six petitioned articles, all by the deadline, and all six were confirmed by the town clerk's office to have the requisite signatures, therefore they will appear in our, in our warrant for town meeting this year. I would draw the board's attention, if you see, beginning on page four. The petitioned article headlines, if you will, one regarding governing the dispersal of school choice funds. We did get one from Jason, Harwichport Libraries, even though we've committed to carrying those forward, but they made sure that that was in. Prohibit hunting in Bell's Neck Conservation Area. Protect the historic West Harwich Schoolhouse with historic restriction. Sell historic West Harwich Schoolhouse using full provisions of the procurement laws. And a study, and I apologize, I noticed a typo there, a study regarding the best use options for the former Harwich Middle School, including recommendations for financial self-sufficiency. So I did hear from a few of the petitioners, and the purpose this evening was just to alert you, the board, that we've met that requirement under the bylaws. There are six petitioned articles that are coming before us in the spring. Additionally, I just wanted to make you aware that at present, there are 31 articles that are appearing in a draft warrant. Nine of them would be considered standard or boilerplate, so those are the ones that deal with our operating budget, our capital plan, the school budgets, and things of that nature. There are five what I would refer to as recurring articles. One of them was just a reference before in your earlier discussion regarding revolving fund authorization, so that will be coming back. Our favorite on the Herring Fisheries. And there are 11 new articles that are being contemplated for this year. What it does not have yet is an owner's unknown article, because that's your next discussion point, and what it does not yet include but will in the first formal draft that you'll get February 28th would be the community preservation articles as well. So this is really just to alert your folks as to what we're looking at right now, so we're probably looking at, in the order of 40 to 50 articles at present.
Thank you, Joe. I'm gonna go on to...
I'm sorry, yes, the question was, is there a change in the name of the board? So if you'd like me to go through and show you some of them...
As long as it's there.
It should be. Let me just triple check that one.
Page four.
Oh, it is there.
Thank you.
As long as we're gonna bring it forth there, is what I meant.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be going through them all, anyway.
Yeah, we have the change to select board, we have the two articles that Dr. Carpenter spoke of earlier. Of course, you have the two conservation articles that you folks had talked about before to put them in draft form. So those, those articles that we've talked or begun the discussion on have already made it into the draft.
Thank you. So we can then go ahead and move on to E, discussion and possible vote to develop a warrant article regarding owner's unknown miscellaneous parcels and land takings. It's no more discussion.
Julie?
Yeah?
Julie?
Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
Thank you. Just a quick comment on the proposed warrant articles. Joe, I did not have time to go through them all, but I do, I certainly have some questions. One related to, well, one comment related to the Conservation Commission's articles. They're gonna be before us either, I think it's the first week in March, I'm not sure. I sent the email from Amy to staff. Amy was on, actually, Amy's still on now, so maybe she can clarify the date when I'm done. But they've already changed the language of one of their two articles, so they're gonna be before the board for one issue unrelated, but also to announce the change of that article. So the one related to Doc Moratorium on the Herring River, they've adjusted that article and they'll be back. Joe, on the petition articles, and I asked you this question last week, legality and time of department heads. So petitioners put through an article, and I understand that they have the right to have those on town meeting floor. The legality of those, though, and the amount of time, staff resources, and whether or not they're even legal, how do we vet that and when are we gonna discuss that?
So, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Selectman McCaskill. To expand a little bit on the citizen initiative process, and I'll say it this way with folks that are present, the other Bill Galvin, that being the Secretary of the Commonwealth, makes it clear, he publishes a book, or the Secretary's Office has published a book that talks about the citizen's guide to town meeting. And one of the things Secretary Galvin has done at clerks' conferences is to emphasize that it is a sacrosanct right of the citizens to put anything they want on a town meeting warrant. We just have to have a procedure around it. And so, again, that's what 271, Chapter 271 of our bylaws gets to. It's the procedure by which folks would have to go through it. There's essentially a prohibition for towns, town employees, and town officials. None of us can impact in any way, shape, or form on the creation of a citizen petition because of that right. They have the right to put in pretty much whatever they want. So to the Selectman's question this evening, as the, as the warrant is developed generally, whether it's petitioned or otherwise, I work with council to develop motions, but also to develop understandings of, with regard to petitions generally, what would the net generally, what would the net effect be, and is it a lasting or a permanent effect? So in some instances, there may be, and I can't get to any specifics right now because council's reviewing, but there may be one or two that the town would be informed by council. That town meeting could adopt it, but it would have no lasting effect and no directive effect. And so one of the things I will do is work with the team, our department heads and other experts, to be aware of the petition articles so that we, the town, can make informed reactions to those. One of the things that the town can do, if, and this is why we have this discussion this evening, there was the deadline by which citizens and others could get their articles to you folks. The warrant, as you folks know, and I know members present have said in years past, the warrant for town meeting is the creation of the Board of Selectmen. So you can add additional articles to that. And as we research these petitioned articles, the town may want to consider, through the Board of Selectmen, adding competing or complementary articles to sort of buttress what the petitions get to. And so we did not, the town did not expend any time, effort, or energy because of that requirement. We left it alone. But now is the time for me to share these with legal and other departments, saying, if this were to pass, what would the effect be, and should the town, through the Selectmen, consider any other actions?
Thank you, Joe.
I hope that answered the Selectman's question.
Does that answer your question, Michael?
Well, let me...
Well, let me just finish with Michael, so...
I want to finish that discussion.
Michael?
That's a good, that's a good start, and I may, I may listen to Larry, and then I might have further comments, so I reserve the right to talk after Larry.
Yeah, okay.
But Joe, that is a good start, and, you know, some of the petition articles, or at least one of the petition articles, seems to be contradict state law and whether or not we could enforce it, whether the boundaries of this property in Howard or not.
Okay, go ahead, Larry.
Yeah, thank you, Michael, for raising that. I raised that to Michael and Joe regarding at least one of the petition articles, because I guess contrary, maybe the direction has changed than it was a few years ago. But a few years ago, we, as a board, decided to help petitioners when they submitted an article, just be sure that the language made sense. Because we had gone through at least one town meeting where we devoted a fair amount of time debating an article that if it had passed would not have achieved what they were trying to do. It was, so we wasted town meeting time, and we wasted staff time. And so at a previous Selectmen, we decided at least to read the draft petitions and give some aid that they made sense, and they met some legal requirements. And so I had hoped that we had not dropped our policy, but I understand that we have, and I'm not sure I agree we need to. I get your point, Joe, but it's still, was it a little embarrassing to spend time on town meeting and not, with no hope of getting anything done?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Sure, I think what the Secretary's Office would say now is the recommended best practice is that, you know, we've already done it in Howard. We have ample time from when petitions are due to when you finalize the warrant, and so that the corrective action or the assist would be with a companion article. And then you work with the petitioners to say, you know, we've analyzed this. If yours goes forward as intended, it will not reach the mark, so we're contemplating an article to do X, Y, Z. In the end, however, we cannot impact upon their language, and I can give the board some more background if you'd like. Another community that I worked in previously, council had ruled by a directive from the Secretary's Office to leave the article that was petitioned that had typographical errors and just a number of things wrong with it, and the response was, you have to put in what the petitioner provided without exception.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
So I would just say, the corrective measure could be if the town contemplates additional articles to either aid or defeat what's petitioned.
Okay. Don, do you have any?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to Larry's point, because I was on the other side of this when the policy happened, as the Chair of the Bylaw and Charter Committee, I have to say that we submitted a number of things a couple of years in a row to our legal counsel that came back actually with an intent completely opposite from what we had originally put in language. So that wasn't a panacea either, that they got assisted by legal counsel. I think that's what Joe's trying to get at here. A petition article by state law should be the intent of the person that was presenting it. Some of these people unwittingly got advice to change language that changed what they were trying to do.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
I got nothing to add.
Neither do I. Okay, so does, any further discussion on that?
No.
Michael, did you want to follow up?
No, I'll wait until I'm back, and I think that both Larry and Don's points are great points. I just, on one of these petition articles, it would require our Conservation Commission to do an awful lot of work on how those properties were purchased, and then I would argue that we don't own the Herring River. We may own the land on each side of it, but we don't own the river, and we certainly don't own the ducks, and we don't own the deer. So there's a lot to be said whether or not this petition article is legal at all. And Joe, I guess we'll have that conversation with council and the board on whether or not we want to have a different article, but I would hate to see our conservation agent, who seems to already be bogged way down, be put in charge of finding out who owns what and how it was purchased. But I will leave this for a conversation for a future meeting, but thank you for the clarification, Joe.
Thank you, Michael. All right, so we will move on now to E, to the discussion and possible vote to develop a warrant article regarding owner's unknown miscellaneous parcels and land takings. I'm throwing it back to you, Joe.
Sure, in a moment, if I could, I'm going to alley-oop it right to Selectman McCaskill. But the purpose of this is, I have not crafted an article to accomplish this project. However, this would be the first discussion that the board could have among many over the coming weeks on how to develop that. And really, what was meant for this tonight is to start that discussion of what would the article or articles look like, and what would you want them to accomplish, and then I can work with legal and start drafting them and bring it back to the board.
Thank you, Joe. So we'll throw it over to Michael. Michael?
Thank you, Joe, and thank you for bringing this forward tonight. The conversation, to me, is simple. Yes, we need a fairly broad article, and what it really comes down to is money. As we all heard last week in the budget, and some of us probably didn't hear, but in certain budgets, there was a number allocated to tax title attorneys and surveyors and taking of owner's unknown and the research involved. Rather than putting it in the budget, I thought it made more sense to put this back on the taxpayers and see how important it is. It is. Leaving a cushion in some of the budgets so that we can do some in case this doesn't go forward. But in my mind, the board needs to create a policy, and they need to create a warrant article on a yearly basis that puts a certain amount of money, to be determined, into an article for town meeting to vote, clean up our mess. And "mess" in all capital letters. It is a large interest amount accruing yearly on properties that are owner's unknown. It is situations where we are then being presented with subdivision plans of people piecing land together, in some instances where there's owner's unknown, but people are actually leasing the land. And I think we've all exhausted the conversation on whether or not we want to take our land back and control our own destiny on that land and wastewater, for instance, or affordable housing. So in my mind, we create an article that goes before town meeting every year with a certain dollar amount to be determined to put the money, and for the process of acquiring all of the miscellaneous parcels and all of the owner's unknown in the town of Howard. And that would be for the legal work involved and the title exam involved. So that's as brief as I can make that. I could probably go on for hours, but it is, I think that we either put it into the budget and inflate our budget, or put it before the taxpayers and say, how important is this to you? It's very important to the board.
Thank you, Michael. And can I ask everybody on the call to make sure you're on mute, because there's a lot of background noise on the call? I don't know if Jamie, if you can do anything about that. Is Jamie, I can't even see.
I'm on mute right now.
Okay, thank you. Larry, do you want to comment?
Well, only, I'm in agreement with that. I think the chore now is to write the warrant article that gives us that in, because Michael covered a lot of items and to make it specific. Because we're really asking for taxpayers as an investment, because we're hoping that this pays off in money, property coming in, or land for wastewater, housing, or whatever we want to use it for. But I think, Joe, it's going to be a tricky warrant article to write, but I do fully agree we need to do it, and then we need a good just, it can be a simple explanation, you know, it's an investment to gain some revenue, but we need to do that as well.
Thank you, Larry. Mary?
No, that was a good summary, Larry, and I agree. I think that's going to be a hard one to write, but I also agree with Michael. We should just keep at this until we get cleaned up.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to throw one more iron in the fire, though, because I agree with everything everybody said, and I would be totally supportful of such an article. But we really need to look inward, too, about our policies. Howard is probably the easiest place to get in front of a planning board on all of Cape Cod. And there have been instances, and I think Julie's fairly familiar with this herself in her line of work, people go in alleging this, and our legal counsel has in the past given opinions to the planning board that, well, that's an intermural problem if people are disputing this. You can give them the approval and let them fight it out themselves in court. I don't believe that that's a sane policy anymore. We really need to delineate that if you can't prove with the deed that you own it, then you're not getting in front of a planning board to do a subdivision because you're not eligible to. And that's something else that we need to do, and it doesn't take a warrant article.
Right. Thank you, Don. And I agree. I think, you know, Michael's points and Larry's and Don's, everybody has valid points, and Michael's point of cleaning this up and keeping at it is, I think, extremely important. I guess my question would be, first of all, you know, I go two ways with this. Do we make a priority list, or do we actually keep it so generic so that the article encompasses all of it as we move forward and monies, you know, as we identify which ones we can take first? Because I think in being too specific, we may sort of handcuff ourselves. So that's just my only comment, but I do think it's important. I think it's a priority for the board. So I don't know if there's...
Julie?
Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
So, you know, in my mind, it's a dollar amount, and then it's priorities of the board, but we also have real estate and open space that met with us two weeks ago that outlined, you know, 10 properties that they thought we should take. So using the process of the committee that we put together to make a priority list would be one of them. And then the other piece of the article, and this, I guess, would be for Joe as he contemplates the article, let's put in the article that the Board of Selectmen will pick and sell a property, or two properties, or three properties to pay for the value of this article. So if we put $500,000 a year before the taxpayers, let's put properties, because there's a certain amount of people out there that have said, so what did people acquire these properties through tax title takings and piecing together titles? It goes back on the tax rolls. So as we've contemplated another property to sell for affordable housing purposes, we put in the article that we will pay for this article. We certainly have to work through the legal part of it, but I'm not looking to spend a half a million dollars a year in the taxpayers' money, but I am looking to take back the four to five to 600 acres of land that are miscellaneous parcels and owner's unknown that seem to be being pieced together, and then subdivisions planned, when we could use those for affordable housing, wastewater offsets, wastewater money, whatever we decide and the town decides. But I would pick a number, and that would be for the legal work, that would be for the surveying, that would be for the appraisal, and that we would put in the article that we will offset that by the sale of land. And the priority, Julie, priority, we have real estate and open space, and they've been begging us for years to purchase land that they've come forward with, and we've taken no action whatsoever, at extreme frustration from that committee, that they come forward with it, and we don't do anything about it. So I would move forward with an article with a dollar amount and an explanation that we will pick something to sell to offset that cost. And I believe it was Don that mentioned in a prior meeting, we don't actually have to spend this money. The Marceline property that we just acquired, there was a piece in the middle of it, and the appraisal came in, which we all thought was a bit high at $170,000. We have to escrow a certain amount of money. Whoever comes forward, they will only come forward, because we've already determined that its owner's unknown. We've already come forward, and very rarely will somebody come forward and say, yeah, I own 100% of that, here's the deed. They may come forward and say, you know what, my great-great-grandparents own 2% of that or 18% of that, and therefore they'll get a value of 18% of that property. And I would hope that the appraisers take into account, which they didn't seem to do on the Marceline property, that that percentage is based on what's going to be built around it, what can be built on it, and what the other 78% of the piece of property is worth. So it's a very little impact to the town, but the longer we talk about this, and the longer we wait, it's never going to correct the interest that's accruing for the town and what shows as an uncollected tax liability. So it seems like a simple article to write, to me, but I guess we'll get into that after Joe manages to create a draft.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. And to your point, yes, the real estate and open space has given us great information, and I'm just saying, in terms of when you draft that article, whatever way it gives us the best ability to move forward is, you know, how we want to draft it. Go ahead, Joe.
First, I would want to start with thank yous because of this process that just occurred, meaning, you know, each of you, as members, have priorities, and you've come to me or staff with issues. This has clearly been the chairman's major effort over the last year that the board has also endorsed. But having you all talk about it upfront is very helpful, and so I appreciate what happened tonight, because I think I have very clear direction. The other thank you, as Selectman McCaskill made reference to, is three of the enhancement of service requests that I did not push forward totaled, I think, if I remember serves correctly, $150,000. And that was for the purpose of trying to accomplish what this discussion item is about. And so when I informed Selectman McCaskill that that would put a lot of pressure on the budget, he offered what I think is a smart approach, and that is the town identifying parcels to sell and the proceeds to be used to fund this. So with all of that, what I'm envisioning right now, and again, I'll still work with not only council, but our Director of Planning and Community Development, the Assessing Office, the Treasurer and Collector's Office, the Finance Director, but I think what we're looking at is probably in the order of three articles. The first would be the article that says that the town is looking to dispose of certain property, and the use of the proceeds would fund, and what I would just use right now as shorthand, the tax title project. And the funding would go towards all of those services that are required, the tax title search, the appraisal, the surveying, all of that. So that takes care of how we're going to do it. The second one gets to what you talked about with real estate and open space, if we then also identify that there are these other parcels to take. So I do think it could be fairly straightforward, and I don't want to say simple or easy, but I think it's one, two, maybe three different articles that woven together can get it done. And I think this is a better approach, because it takes the pressure off the operating budget, and, as Selectman McCaskill said, you put it right back to the voters of town meeting and say, we think this is an issue. If you agree, we would ask you to endorse these articles. So this was very helpful tonight, and I'll get right back on the horn with council, and we'll continue crafting.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Any other discussion by the board?
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
If I'm okay to assume that there is a consensus of the board to proceed. I know it's a bad word.
I believe there is, and I'll just poll everybody. Don?
Yep, sure.
Mary? Michael, obviously.
Yeah, obviously.
Okay, so you have that direction, Joe.
Thank you.
Now we go on to contracts.
Do these one at a time, right?
Yeah.
I move that we vote to approve Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Public Assistance PA Program Contract FEMA-4496-DR-MA, March 27, 2020, COVID-19, in the amount of 12... PA Program Contract FEMA-4496-DR-MA, March 27, 2020, COVID-19, in the amount of $12,923.60.
Moved in second, Joe?
If I may, with the understanding that we have the documents in your signature file, we would be looking for the board to authorize the vice chair to sign those documents on behalf of the board, because the chair is away.
Okay. Is everybody good with that? Do I need to poll?
None of these are for all? Say again?
None of those are for all, then, they're just the executive signature?
Correct. I believe on the FEMA, what they're looking for is someone on behalf of the town to sign the contract and to confirm that we will adhere to procurement processes.
Okay.
I don't believe any of those get to board signatures.
Should add that to the motion. The motion is to authorize the chair pro tem to sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's added.
That's added to my motion.
Okay.
And still seconded.
And still seconded. Okay, so we're good. Do I need to poll anybody, or are we good?
Yeah.
Yes, poll? No, I know, but in terms of allowing the vice chair to sign, do I need to poll or just allow the amendment to move forward?
Yeah, it's part of the motion.
Okay, so we'll take a vote. Michael?
An aye.
Larry? Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Okay. I move that we vote to approve federal, I move that we vote to approve the vice chair to sign, to approve Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Public Assistance PA Program FEMA-4496-DR-MA, March 27, 2020, COVID-19, in the amount of $1,924.29.
Can I just ask that, when you're saying to allow the vice chair to sign, acting as chair pro tem, because that's what she is?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Then I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Michael? Vote.
Are we on vote or discussion?
Yeah, just vote. You don't have anything to say, do you?
No, I just want to say you're doing a wonderful job.
All right, thank you. So, now you can vote.
Well, then, I'm an aye.
Larry? Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Okay.
All right.
I move that we vote to approve a change order for Covielo Electric in the amount of $4,043.83 for the Brooks Park Lighting Project.
Who's signing that? I believe that one is for the entire board.
Can I get a second?
For the board to sign.
Oh, for the board to sign.
Oh, moved and seconded.
Second.
Michael?
I'm an aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, so now we're on to Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I do have one brief item, and it actually goes back to an announcement, and it is a different vein than I normally speak in. But, I did want to take a moment to emphasize the panel discussion that our town is hosting on Thursday regarding suicide awareness. You know, I moved to town six and a half years ago and had an occasion to meet Sheila House, and just remarked at how I had been in other towns and hadn't seen a youth counselor before. And so, I'm glad I mentioned it, because Sheila gave me the story as to how that position came to be, and that's when our town was touched by the horrible hand of suicide. And so, the issue never goes away. We've been felt with the sting of that pain again. And so, I just want to emphasize that if, you know, if anyone is struggling to certainly seek help, if anyone knows someone that's struggling to seek help. And I think this is a great opportunity Thursday night for many of us to get the resources and better understanding, because the issue doesn't go away. Sometimes it debates, but I think it's a very timely discussion to have. And so, I just want to remind everybody that it's Thursday evening, February 17th. It's 5:30, and it's at the Brooks Free Library, and it's a worthy take.
Thank you, Joe.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As to what Joe has said, and I want to make sure that the community gets this, I was concerned, the little one that I'm raising seemed to be getting depressed, especially during COVID, which is something everybody's experiencing. And when she went to the pediatrician, I brought it up, and she goes, you name me somebody that I'm seeing right now who isn't clinically depressed. So, this is a really serious problem right now for pretty much all kids, and I would urge most, the parents out there, not to think, well, it's not going to be my kid. It's somebody, almost everybody that she's seeing has some level of depression.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
Just that I sat in on the, I think it's, I don't know what the organization is called, but it's all the selectmen and county commissioners. Ed McMahon seems to kind of organize it. At any rate, the Friday one was on ADUs, and they did a really nice job. It was Alisa from the Housing Assistance Corp., and then a woman that works for her that chairs that program. They've gotten some federal funding, and they're going to work on putting a package together to promote this so that people know. And it just looked to me like something that we ought to bring back. I'd love to have, you know, probably John Ideman and maybe the Building Commissioner, those the two right players to talk about what we could do to help make that happen.
If there's anything you want to share from the meeting, I'll certainly get it to staff, and we'll bring it back.
Okay, I will.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Mary, just might want to add to your comment. ADU stands for?
Oh, accessory dwelling unit. It's when you turn the garage into an apartment, or...
And we did pass that. We passed that bylaw.
We did pass it, but now we've got to promote it.
Right, and there's, you know, there's deed restrictions, but it's because you're trying to obviously create year-round housing, right?
Right, right.
But, any kind of new monies that are out there to help, yeah, we should do whatever we can to get the word out there. It's super important. Larry?
Nothing.
Michael?
I have nothing.
In the spirit of that, I make a motion to adjourn.
I have nothing.
Second.
Thank you. All right, I said it's, we're adjourning. Mary seconded. So, aye.
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 Michael?
Aye.
Thank you.